Hello and welcome to the Agora Hills Planning Commission meeting. Please silence your cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak, please submit a written comment card. Please complete a comment card for each item and submit it to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. I am going to now call the meeting to order. And I defer to our newest commissioner, Commissioner Stein, for the pledge of allegiance. Will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? I will now defer to City Clerk Rodriguez to administer the oath of office to our newest planning commissioner.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations, Commissioner Stein.
Wonderful. Welcome. We're excited to have you here. City Clerk Rodriguez, can we have the roll call?
Good evening. Commissioner Reinhardt?
Present.
Commissioner Sharon?
Present.
Commissioner Stein?
Present.
Vice Chair Roth?
Present.
Chair Anderson?
Present.
Chair Anderson, you have a quorum.
Terrific. I would now like to ask one of my commissioners to move and second approval of the agenda.
Commissioner Sharon makes the motion to approve the agenda.
Vice Chair Roth, second.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Anderson, you have approval, five to zero.
Terrific. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. If you've got something to distribute to us, please give it to the city clerk and don't come up to the DA. She'll distribute it to us. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to any other speaker. Persons addressing the planning commission shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Kimberly, do we have any speaker cards?
Thank you, Chair Anderson. No written public comments have been received and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Terrific. All right, so now we're at the consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. I will defer to the city clerk. Do we have any items, cards for that?
Thank you. We do not have any public speakers.
Terrific. Okay. Are there any questions from the commission on the consent calendar? Okay. I will now call for a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar.
Vice Chair Roth makes a motion to adopt tonight's consent calendar item.
Second.
Roll call vote? Commissioner Reinhardt?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Anderson, you have approval, five to zero.
Okay, wonderful. Now we get to the meat of the agenda. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider approving a site plan and architectural review permit for external improvements to an existing office building, approve an oak tree permit to encroach into the protected zone of two oak trees, and to make a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. I will now open the public hearing and defer to community director, to community development director, Thomas, for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. My name's Denise Thomas. I'm the community development director. This evening, our project planner for this particular set of requests would be Katrina Garcia. She's going to walk you through the presentation and will be available for any questions you may have at the end. Thank you.
Terrific.
Thank you, Denise, and good evening commissioners. Tonight's item will discuss the exterior upgrades to an existing commercial office building located on Agora Road. So tonight I'll be covering the following topics: the site and vicinity, existing conditions of the lot, the project scope, design and architecture, and lastly, staff's recommendation. The site is located in the Business Park Manufacturing Zoning District with a freeway corridor overlay, also referred to as BPMFC. The project site is surrounded by undeveloped lots and offices to the south within the Lady Face Mountains specific plan. On the north side across the 101 freeway are a mix of residential uses and retail stores, including a pet daycare. East and west of the site are existing office buildings which were part of a phased development called the Agora Hills Technology Park, and included the five office buildings identified on the map. The lot is approximately six and a half acres and contains a two-story office building about 121,000 square feet in floor area and three solar canopy structures on the parking lot. The site is also fully landscaped with a mixture of trees, shrubs, and ground cover. The site also contains 21 oak trees that are both onsite and overhanging from the adjacent lots. The building site is accessible through several driveways, one of which is shared with the adjacent office building. The following photos show a ground perspective of the existing conditions of the site. The first photo shows the main entrance of the building, proposed to be remodeled. The second photo shows a walkway located between the office buildings going towards the existing outdoor space for the occupants. And the last photo shows a different angle of the building and the walkway coming from the main entrance to the outdoor space. The proposed project includes a wooden platform deck approximately 1,000 square feet in size. The deck ranges in height from about a foot to four feet above the finished grade. As I mentioned earlier, the site contains 21 oak trees, but only three are within the area of work. Two of the trees will experience encroachment of the protected zone caused by the deck fittings, the pergola and the fill for the DG walkway. Tree 83 will have no more than 4% encroachment, and tree 84 will have a maximum of 6% encroachment. Tree 84 will also require 8% of the canopy to be pruned to accommodate the height of the pergola, which is less than the 20% the code allows for individual trees. The scope of the project also includes an exterior wall remodel, which includes new accent material and paint along the south elevation of the building and along the east corner. The landscaping immediately south of the building exterior will also be remodeled and includes drought tolerant plantings. The rendering is depicting the proposed pergola on top of the wooden deck. The pergola will be about nine to 10 feet in height, measured from the top of the finished deck to the shade cover of the pergola. The pergola will be constructed of aluminum steel and will be painted a dark gray color. Wooden slats are also proposed on one side of the pergola where the media wall will also be located. The deck platform will also be composed of wood material to complement the updated building facade and pergola. This rendering is depicting the south elevation of the building. The wooden louvers will line the top edge of the building and will be painted a greenish gray color beneath the wooden slats. The area between the first and second floor windows will be painted a dark gray color to match the pergola. In keeping consistent with the other buildings in the business park, the building will retain the existing primary beige color and the accent concrete scoring. The last rendering is another perspective that shows the landscaped area with the new outdoor space and the upgraded building facade. So that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve site plan and architectural review permit case number SPR 2023-0035 and oak tree permit case number OAK 2023-0067, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the findings of the attached draft resolution, and to make a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions, as are the applicants. Thank you.
Terrific. Do any of my commissioners have questions for staff?
Commissioner Stein has one question. When you determine the 4% or 6% encroachment, how many, what does that entail, like feet wide?
Can you repeat the last portion of your question? I didn't quite hear you.
So you're talking about 4% or 6% encroachment? I'm just trying to get an idea of how wide that would be going in. Is it a foot? Is it six inches? I'm just not sure.
I can pull up the oak tree report and I can take a look at it. I don't know the exact feet of encroachment, but it's in the oak tree report. But the arborist is also available, I believe, to answer any questions.
I just was curious.
Okay. Well, we can probably just defer that to the arborist who's present.
If I may?
Please.
I spoke with staff earlier today. Thank you for your time, as always. I was at the site. I will probably do ex parte in a second, so I'll disclose more then. But I was there earlier and I did see a crane being used, and it was phenomenal seeing, like I think it was probably an HVAC unit go up to the top of the building. And I watched for like 10 minutes and it was fascinating. The physics behind that, I'm not an engineer, so. But my question is, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't in, you know, that was a separate permit, there was not active, you know, an active use of this permit. And it appears that that is the case. And I just want to say, now seeing from the top of the building with all the solar panels on there, if none of those were harmed, what a phenomenal job that operator on the crane was doing, but I'll leave it there.
When the applicant has their opportunity to speak, well, you can ask that question and they should be able to tell you why they had a crane out today.
I got excited for a second. I thought you meant like a bird crane. Any other questions for staff? You know, actually, I would love to talk to the arborist, like Commissioner Stein. I'd just be curious about the impact on the oak trees. I have a hard time with just the percentages, having an understanding of that.
So the arborist is present. I guess we can have the staff or a city presentation or the applicant presentation if we're ready to do that.
We, I guess we are, and then we can talk to the arborist after the applicant presentation? Okay, terrific. So let's do ex parte communications, and I too visited the site. It's gorgeous. Any other ex parte communications to disclose?
Plus one on that. I was there, as I said earlier today.
I did not visit the site, but I saw it and I saw the crane today, just in passing.
Bird crane or real crane? Mechanical crane? Okay.
I drove by, but I didn't go into the plaza. Oh, sorry. I thought I hit the button. I'm really familiar with that building area, though, because I've visited it several times. I had a friend who was a tenant in the adjacent building.
I visited a site and actually did walk where they were going to put the deck and part of it, so I wanted to get a sense of how it was going to impact the trees.
Terrific. Thank you. Okay, so the public hearing is open and I will defer to the applicant. You or your representative have 15 minutes for your presentation, so feel free to come on up and then when you're here, adjust the microphone to make sure that you're being able to speak into it. And the city clerk will let you know when you've got one minute.
My name is Rich McAvoy. I'm the owner of the building, along with my business partners. Our company's called Harbor Associates. Good evening, Denise. We own several office buildings throughout Southern California, about 28 projects throughout Southern California, this being one of our latest projects. Our aim is really to improve workplace environments for the benefit of the employees so as to help employers retain and recruit talent. As you can imagine, office buildings have gone through a bit of hardship of late. Most people unfortunately don't want to go to the office. So we are really creating workplace environments that attract the employee back to the campus, to the environment. In this particular case, at 30601, our goal is to really design a project, and that which we've done, to inspire who is our new tenant, A2 Therapeutics, who's an innovative company in and of its own right, developing cancer therapeutics, and moving into Agora Hills and expanding on their footprint here in the city. As many of you may already know, they're also a tenant at 30401 and 30501 adjacent, and this would be a GMP manufacturing facility for their FDA hopefully approved trials that are going on currently. So with them and many companies like them, employee retention and employee recruitment is a big deal. Creating an environment that welcomes and gives better lifestyle aspects to the employee in their work environment is paramount to their success in recruiting and retaining the best talent in the world to help with their science. And so in this case, we've taken a fairly ordinary two-story concrete tilt-up building and tried to create new drought-tolerable landscape environments in and around, some soft seating elements, some outdoor seating elements for conferencing and meeting areas so that they can break out and enjoy the outdoor environment that's mature and grown here throughout Agora Hills, which we think the site represents well. So we've done our best to not impact the environment as best we could. We think that's a feature to obviously the city, but mostly this project with mature trees and so as not to disturb them any more than it's needed while still being able to provide the type of amenities that customers are looking for today. And so, you know, as we look up and down Agora Road, you know, many of the buildings are now very well empty. We're doing our best to kind of advocate for this part of Agora Hills as a new innovation zone, if you will, in and around the city to attract more life science business to the community. Many of you are aware that obviously Amgen is in Thousand Oaks and has a stronghold on that business segment. We look to try to bring that business more closer to Los Angeles and here in Agora Hills with our ownership of this building as well as the couple other buildings adjacent. So we hope you enjoy our project, as we've spent some considerable time designing it. This is Catherine. She's the lead designer and architect, so I'll let her talk a little bit about the specific improvements.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Catherine Dow, and thank you for your time today. I'll be speaking a little bit about the design. Rich and I started working together for now, for a while now, working on many commercial projects, office projects, and really trying to bring wellness and community into all our projects. Here at 3601, what we were most captivated by is the landscape itself, the sloping pathways, the beautiful sunken courtyards, and the oak trees make this site a very unique and special site. It's very tranquil out here, and we really wanted to capitalize on that. We really wanted to create a wellness place for people working here to be able, not just to bring their work outside, to have a setting that they can have meetings, they can have a moment of respite, or just collaborate more together here outside. So we really, from concept, our intent was always to respect the natural environment and touch lightly in our improvements. So mainly on the facade, we have some light. On the main entry facade, we have some light improvements that we're proposing, really just to warm up this light-colored concrete building, make it more compatible and more appealing against the natural setting. And that's also with our selections of the accent paint that we have as well. And secondly, we would, we are proposing that we upgrade the landscape with more drought tolerant type plants. And lastly, we'd like to provide an amenity, an outdoor amenity, and that includes a deck over 1,000 square feet. a deck over 1,000 square feet. It would be in the same wood material that we have that's cladding over the elevation. Again, this is, you know, an opportunity for people working here to come out and really enjoy the landscape. But thank you so much for your time and we're, the whole team is here and we're ready to answer any of your questions.
Oh, that's fantastic. Thank you. Do any of our, before we move on to public comment, do any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Hello. Thank you for that. Really great to know a little bit more about your business and your thoughts behind the design and your intention on why these improvements matter to you. I really appreciated that. I would love to talk to the arborist. I don't know if that's, is that appropriate?
Yes. And if we may, it sounds as though you were thoughtful about this. So perhaps even before the arborist, you could describe for us, you clearly have a concern about the natural environment, if you want to talk about what you were thinking about before introducing the arborist. We'd welcome that.
Sorry. I'm sorry. In which way?
Well, it sounds like as you came into this project, you too appreciated the oak trees. So I have a feeling that as you were designing this, you were thinking about the oak trees too and minimizing the impact on the oak trees.
Correct. And we have a team with the arborists, with the landscape architect, and our civil engineers and our structural engineers, we worked very hard to design this organic-shaped deck, even locating the placement of the piers and making sure that it's not disruptive to the canopy that we see. I know you're concerned, you had questions about how close it is. I did take a closer look at that and Ann can speak to this more, but it was less than a foot of one of the piers.
And actually, before she comes up, I'm curious, will people in the deck be able to sit under the shade of the oak tree? No, okay.
It kind of sits within a pocket, if you will, between a couple smaller oak trees. But yes, I mean, as we designed the project collectively, we were pretty intrigued by the ability to do some things outside because of the natural landscape that exists. It's pretty unique. Frankly, often I spend a lot of money planting trees that, and in this case, you know, there's some incredible trees there, in particular the massive oak that sits between the two buildings, which is unlike any I've ever seen. So we really wanted to try to celebrate that. And the deck actually peers out over, if you will, it's a little bit cantilevered, if you could call it that, and looks down onto the large oak into that center courtyard, if you will, that plaza.
Will you welcome outside residents to come and just have lunch there if this all gets approved?
On the weekends. But yes, thank you. And to answer your question about the crane, that's actually the result of A2 Therapeutics' ongoing tenant improvements. It's separate and distinct of our project on the exterior, which we presented tonight. That's a tenant improvement permit that's been pulled and they're probably 70 to 80% through those improvements. And we're really excited to see them continue to grow in the city as well as in our projects in the buildings.
Fantastic. And then, yes, we would love to hear from the arborist.
So you have questions about the oak tree encroachments?
Are they going to be okay?
Will they be okay? I would certainly hope they will, you know, they're individuals just like us and, but the amount of encroachment is very small. You, I think you asked about the specifics of it. The smaller of the oak trees, Oak Tree 83, is going to have 20 caisson or foot, concrete footings excavated, and they're all discrete footings, so you're not cutting in a linear line across the trees. And I think they have a little bit of wiggle room if they do, you know, run across a root of any size. And if they can't move it, they can wrap the root in a plumber's foam and pour the concrete around it. And the plumber's foam gives the roots room to expand as they grow and, but there's a total of, I think it's, oh, and also they're going to be demolishing an existing wall under Oak Tree 83 and then they're putting in a stair in approximately the same place. So there's a total of, I believe it's 68 square feet that they'll be disturbing and the total canopy is like 1,500 square feet. So it's a very small percentage. And then in Oak, under Oak Tree 84, the large one, that one, they have, I think they have fewer concrete footings going in there. They have 17 concrete footings going under that. And again, we have a little bit of wiggle room. And then they're putting in a DG path. It's raised, so they're not excavating for it. They're putting it on the existing grade, leading from the sidewalk to the raised deck. And that is a 4,700-square-foot canopy area and the total, the total encroachment area is 231 square feet. So we're pretty confident that the oak trees won't be harmed as long as the contractor, you know, follows the conditions of approval and.
You'll be out there watching him to make sure.
Yes.
And I heard you say DG path, so it means it's permeable.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, DG path, so it means it's permeable. We care about our stormwater.
Yeah, it'll be permeable.
That's fantastic. Any other questions? Yes?
What is the 8% pruning? What does that come to linearly?
Because of the pergola, we have to prune a few branches and we always estimate height when we estimate for pruning. So we believe they'll have to prune about 3% on Tree 83 and possibly up to, I think it's five, up to 5% on Tree 84, so.
And do you know how much that comes to in feet?
In what?
In feet?
No. No. I mean, you have to, you have to cut back to certain places on a tree to make a proper cut. You can't just lop off the end where you need it to be cut. You have to go back to a lateral that's sufficiently large to take over the job of the thing you're cutting off. So we really can't estimate that.
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes. So you're basically just going to be raising the canopy to have the pergola.
Over the pergola, there will have to be some pruning to accommodate it.
When you start doing like the excavation to put the platform?
I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Start doing the excavation for the platform. If you determine that the root system is further out than you anticipated, will you scale back the deck at that point or?
No, what they'll do if they, I mean, we anticipate that the root system is pretty much throughout that area. It's just that, I had a professor that used to say the gestalt of roots is random. So you can't tell, you can't tell exactly where they're going to be, which is why we want the option of maybe slightly adjusting the location or running the roots through the, through the footings themselves.
Yeah, the design is somewhat fungible depending upon what we encounter.
And while you're doing the work, there will be an arborist coming out periodically to check on the status of the.
I believe the conditions require that the applicant call us when they're going to be doing any kind of excavation or pruning, so.
Thank you.
If I may just ask one question on the possibility that they would wrap a root with a plumbing fixture, that's not a plumbing fixture, but is flexible, what would the, like, what's the, what's the lifespan of that? Like, are we talking like that root, part of the root system can exist in that condition for 25, 50 years or?
Well, if you're wrapping, you know, a significant root, you're going to give it, I think it's like three or four inches of plumber's foam around it. So it can expand to the, to the degree of that plumber's foam, or to the depth of that plumber's foam. And unless you're, you know, right up next to the tree, you're not going to have roots that are that large. There's what they call a zone of rapid taper that's typical with trees and the large roots come out and start decreasing in size. They taper in size and that's typically seven to 10 feet. I mean, it's a rule of thumb, so it's not exact, but, you know, we're probably not going to need to be wrapping any large roots.
I'm learning so much tonight. Okay. I will now defer to this. Any other comments or questions? Okay. I will defer to the city clerk. Kimberly, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Oh, okay. Well, you are welcome to offer a response if you would like to the non-questions. You have, how much time do you have? My script will tell me. You have five minutes if you would like it. Fantastic. Thank you. Okay. All right. Before closing the public hearing, does any commissioner have further questions of the applicant or staff? Okay. There being no further questions, I will now close the public hearing. We will move on to deliberations. Commissioner Sharon, are you prepared to get us started?
Yes. So I, you know, considering that there are so many oak trees on the property, I find that like this is, you guys are taking a lot of care for the three that are going to be impacted. I actually, was actually very impressed with all the lengths and measures that were in the report that you guys are going to be taking. And I lost my spot real quick. Hold on one second. Yeah, I'm so sorry about that. I'm reading my notes. I actually really love that you guys are bringing this to our city. I find that you guys are kind of mimicking the, your across-the-street partner, the mountains, and you're kind of expanding it into the, you know, what would typically just be like a hard shell of a building and you're bringing the mountain a little bit closer to you guys. So I actually, you know, I think that these improvements are, you know, necessary with the times. I find that the way you guys are taking it into consideration, I really respect it and I think it is very, very much what the city is about. We want to bring, you know, the natural elements into the parts where we are, you know, doing our business and living our lives and, you know, I really like this project.
Terrific. And I'm going to channel my inner Travis and ask if you are able to make all the findings.
Yes, I can make all the findings.
Terrific. Commissioner Roth?
I will start with saying that I approached this with a little bit less concern about the oak tree consideration, given the fact that there was so much that had gone into making sure that the health of those mature oak trees was kept and cared for, which is obviously, I think, all of us as residents of the city are very attuned with and hope all of our development has, you know, a similar type of care for. I would also echo your comments about it reflecting the mountain ladyface. I do believe that when you drive up and down Agoura Road, to the extent that some of those buildings actually disappear and become part of the environment is a plus. And I also think it's a plus not being a, you know, a driver in your car and driving past them, but as an employee at the site, I believe that those types of improvements really elevate, you know, elevate the building, elevate the happiness and just kind of the calmness of the area, get people outside and to reflect on the beautiful environment, especially folks who are saving people's lives. It's probably, you know, a challenging and difficult job when they're inside and so bringing that outside and taking a sense, or taking a second to be calm and, and look at the natural wonders around that we have so brilliantly here is really cool. Also, just generally speaking, very happy to see the tenant improvements, you know, seeing companies invest in Agoura Hills, really care about the retention of good quality, high-paying jobs that attract, you know, talent from around the world and development of, you know, incredible life-saving drugs, I think is phenomenal, makes us competitive to some neighbors up the street in Thousand Oaks. So I like to see that. But then also on the external, I used to work down at the Colorado Center and the Water Garden down in Santa Monica, and those buildings have incredible outdoor pergolas and other uses that really, I had some of my, you know, best, most productive meetings outside under a pergola of similar taste. So I think that this does all the things that we want as a city in attracting good jobs, good companies, and also thread the fine needle of making sure it looks like Agoura and reflects the beauty of our scenery. So good job on that. I can also make all the findings.
Terrific. Thank you. Commissioner Reinhardt?
Thank you. I too echo, you know, my fellow commissioners in complimenting the care that you put into the design. You know, having been in that center several times, you know, over the years, you look at it and the buildings are starting to show their age. I mean, it's, you know, I love 80s music and I love 80s architecture, but we need a little facelift, right? We need a little, we need a little update here. And I think that the design, you know, the design elements that are incorporated really do fit with the character of the city and with what we want for, you know, kind of the look, especially in the ladyface corridor. And I can appreciate that. And also as someone who is going through an office move in my professional life, not in the city of Agoura Hills, you know, it's nice to see that the thoughtfulness that goes into planning for how the overall employee experience would be for people, you know, you know, from the new hire, fresh out of school, to, you know, the executive and making sure that they all have quality of life, which is what is so important, whether you live here, whether you work here, or hopefully live and work here. And I can make all the findings.
Terrific. Thank you. Commissioner Stein?
First of all, I want to thank you for believing in our city to want to invest your harder money into real estate. I also really like the way you approached the project, improving the exterior. I do believe, yes, everything needs a facelift over time and you're doing, I think it looks really good. My biggest concern, obviously, was the deck and the encroachment into the trees. I feel comfortable with the arborist's explanation and, you know, I look forward to it and I can find all the findings.
Fantastic. And I just want to echo my fellow commissioners. Thank you. I love the idea of the city of Agoura Hills becoming a center of innovation and I love the spirit that you're bringing to this, the wellness, the respect for the natural environment. I hadn't thought about it as bringing the mountains into the building. That's a beautiful concept. I too can make all the findings and I'm really, really excited to see this grow and develop. Okay. I will now defer to, I will now call for a motion and a second. Okay.
Commissioner Reinhardt makes a motion.
Vice Chair Roth, seconds.
And Travis, yeah.
Sorry, can we just restate that the motion is to approve the staff recommendation?
Commissioner Reinhardt makes a motion to approve the staff recommendations.
Vice Chair Roth makes, seconds the improved motion.
Terrific. Kimberly, can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Reinhardt? Aye. Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Anderson, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. I will now defer to Community Development Director Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. The decision of the planning commission shall be final within 15 days from the date of the decision unless an appeal has been filed with the city council. Thank you.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Oh. Okay. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider approving a conditional use permit and site plan architectural review permit to add 841.5 square feet to an existing single-family residence located on a hillside lot and to make a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. I will now open the public hearing and defer to Community Development Director Thomas for staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. My name's Denise Thomas. I'm the Community Development Director. Robbie Nessavich, our principal planner, will be presenting this item to you this evening and will be available for any questions you may have at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission. The item before you is consideration of a conditional use permit and site plan architectural review permit to add 842 square feet to an existing single-family residence located on a hillside lot and to make a. on a hillside lot and to make a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. The original house was constructed in 1973 as part of the Liberty Canyon residential tract prior to the incorporation of the city and is located just under 1,000 feet from the 101 freeway. The property is a residential single-family with a freeway corridor overlay and is subject to the city's hillside ordinance since the property has a slope over 10%. As you can hopefully see on the screen, the project involves an approximately 795-square-foot addition to the first floor on the northwest side of the existing residence and the enclosure of approximately 46 square feet of existing patio area next to the entryway for the residence. This results in a total addition of approximately 842 square feet. 276 square feet of interior space is also proposed to be remodeled, and an existing retaining wall on the north side of the property would be relocated to accommodate the addition. Next, I'm going to show you the existing versus proposed elevations. The addition is proposing to use the same or similar exterior colors and materials as the existing residence. These images show the west elevation, and you can see the addition on the left side of the bottom image to the left of the red line. These are the elevations shown from the north. You can see the proposed addition on the bottom image, and the second-story roofline of the existing residence is not changing, and so the addition is in between the two red lines. And lastly, these are the east elevations. You can see the main addition on the right side of the bottom image. I do want to note on this particular elevation, on the top, it looks like there's, the roofline looks a little bit different on the top than on the bottom. The proposed elevations on the bottom are existing, it's just the existing elevations, they wanted to show the rear roofline, and so just note that the roofline isn't changing. The existing residence is considered a Type 1 non-conforming building because it was constructed with a 19-foot, 11-inch front setback and a building height of 21 feet 9 inches prior to the incorporation of the city. Pursuant to Section 9702B of the city's municipal code, Type 1 non-conforming buildings may continue provided that any improvement, alteration, or enlargement shall comply with all provisions of the district. While the existing structure is a Type 1 non-conforming building, the proposed addition meets all applicable objective standards in the municipal code, including building height for hillside structures, building coverage, and setbacks. And lastly, just to provide some additional context, on the screen are two street view images of the existing residence. The image on the left is taken from Jimboey Road, which is to the east of the residence. On the right is a view from Provident Road to the north of the residence. As you can see, there is vegetation and a wall adjacent to the right-of-way on the north side of the property that would screen the view of the project and would limit impacts to adjacent residences. Additionally, the addition is on a lower elevation than the right-of-way on Provident Road, which also helps to screen the view of the project. And with that, staff respectfully recommends the Planning Commission approve conditional use permit case number CUP 2022-0022 and site plan architectural review case number SPR 2023-0038, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the findings of the draft resolution, and make a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. That concludes staff's presentation. We and the applicant are available for any questions.
Nicely done, thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions for staff?
Yeah, I'll just jump in real fast. We spoke earlier, and I think it's abundantly clear that there's not any second-story addition as part of this project, but I just want to affirm that for the few public who are here, which I assume are applicants, but just make sure it's on record.
That is correct.
Terrific, thank you. That was my question too, and Robbie, thank you for clarifying that for me earlier as well, just to make sure. And so here, and my understanding too then, and maybe this is also just for my fellow commissioners as well, we had three public comments, one from Norman and Cheryl encouraging us to approve, and then we had two public comments from Mr. and Mrs. Galvin. The first, concerned about the possibility of a second story, and then a second, my understanding is now that they understand that there's not a second story, they are happy with this going forward. Okay, terrific. Any other questions? Okay, wonderful. So the public hearing is open. I defer to, as Vice Chair Roth assumes, yep, 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 you, we're thinking it's, you're the only two here, are you, are you our applicants? Would you like, yeah, it's you. Feel free to come on up, you can have, you have 15 minutes for your presentation, and, uh-huh?
I don't think we're going to need 15 minutes. Hello, my name is Brian Phelps and Tracy, we bought a property over here in Agora about five years ago. It's a great design, it's a great property, and we plan on raising our kids and hopefully retiring there, like our other neighbors share and several other in the neighborhood. But when we bought the place, it was dilapidated, we needed to fix it up, and so we always thought that we were going to add to it, right? It's only about 3,000 square feet, and we've got a 13,000-square-foot property. So when we bought it, we always anticipated growing as we grow in the house. One of the problems is, is the master bedroom's right on the front of the property, and that's kind of why we wanted to get it off the front of the property. And so through the process, we came to this point today, and given approval, we really appreciate.
Yeah, moving, having the master bedroom was never ideal for me in the front of the home. I just, yeah, no. So when, when we originally wanted to go up and we weren't able to do that, it worked out better to go further out, but the space that we have, it's a very awkward property. It's a pie shape, we've got a hill on one side, nothing on the other side. So we worked with architects to see what's the best use of the space that we have, and this worked out where we still are not, you know, taking away the landscaping, any of, not blocking anybody's view, not taking, compromising anything for anybody else. We're taking space that our children use as a basketball court that we could move to the driveway, you know, so.
That's what driveways are for.
The drive, yes, yes, and basketball's important too, don't you know? So we really hope you consider this, and we want to stay here forever.
Aww, we want to be here forever. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay. I will now defer to the city clerk. Kimberly, do we have any public comments?
Thank you. We did receive written public comments. They were forwarded to the Planning Commission and posted, and as mentioned, Rebecca and Andre Galvin, there were two, and Norman and Cheryl, I think it's Buering, and there are no public speaker cards.
Terrific. Would you like to say anything else to the commission before we begin our deliberations?
Pretty, pretty please.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Yeah, we appreciate your time. It's been the longest project never started, and we're looking forward to getting construction always up.
If I may just ask one question, just out of curiosity, the public comments that we received, was that, did you all talk to your neighbors? I assume you've talked.
Absolutely. The original plan, the original plan was to build up on the garage, because I have a great view out of, above the garage. But as Andre and Becky, they're like, hey, that's going to block us, and also through the process, we found that the slope was too much for a second story in the area, so okay, we redid our plans. This is four years, three, four years in the making, so we changed our plans, we put it out in the back, and it's like snuck into the hill there, so it's not viewable from the street, and it makes everything great. We've talked to every one of them, we got a big sign, a four-by-eight sign in the front of the property, right? And so we've talked to every, we're friends with everybody in the neighborhood, even Andre and Becky, even though they have their concerns, they're good friends. And so everybody knows exactly what we're going to do before we even came to you guys.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I think that's, sound like great neighbors. I'm on the other side of Agora, but I would love to be next to you.
We all want to live there, we don't, we want to keep the harmony, we're not interested in having trouble.
Very good that you want to keep the harmony, and also, I mean, you know, this might be, this process in putting it on the first floor might be a blessing in disguise, because if you do want to be here forever, the older you get, you might not want to go up those stairs, so.
Part of the blessing of it not working is that I unfortunately do have some medical issues, and stairs are a problem for me.
Yeah.
And I go up once and down once now. I can't, I recently diagnosed with a, whatever. So this worked out the way it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
For that same reason. I, yeah, I could, I can't, I'm over stairs.
Right, right, but I mean, and just again, the fact that you really took into consideration the neighborhood.
Oh.
And, and your lot, and that neighborhood is one of the oldest, you know, in, you know, in Agora Hills, and it's really beautiful. Again, I have some family friends who live over there, and.
Oh, it's awesome.
Lovely drive, I did drive past, and, you know, understanding, you know, with design challenges, it's, it's nice to hear that you took everything into consideration, and it's been a long journey, but hopefully we're all at the finish line.
I, from your mouth, to the rest of the commissioners' ears.
Terrific. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. I will close the public hearing. Any ex parte communications to disclose? I will here while my mic is still on. It's beautiful, like you guys, it's a, I did drive by, and it's, you guys live in a gorgeous place.
I also drove by, and yes, it's a beautiful neighborhood, and I think it'll all work out well.
I drove by too. Sorry for your cell reception, but I drove by.
I drove by as well to, and tried to look at the neighbor's point of view and felt that you were not going to restrict their views.
Wonderful. Okay, Commissioner Reinhardt, can you get us started on deliberations?
Certainly. So I, you know, I looked at the plan, and I also looked at, you know, the email chain of, you know, public comments from your neighbors, and as I said, you know, in the questioning, that I think that it's really great that you took, you know, their comments into consideration and looked at, you know, how can I make sure that our property works the best for us? The quirks of older houses, right? You know, I mean, in my house, I often go, what were they thinking with some of the design elements? But that's, you know, that's what happens as, you know, as houses age, right? We find new opportunities to improve them. So looking at, looking at everything that you've done, I can make all the findings.
Terrific. Commissioner Stein?
First of all, I always like to hear that people are willing to improve their homes because it increases the values of everybody else's home, so I'm in favor of that. I looked at the layout, and I could see why you want to do what you're doing, a little awkward in terms of the existing layout, so I'm fine with that. I did not see anything that would restrict anybody else's view, so I can make all the findings.
Wonderful. Commissioner Roth?
Yeah, I'll just echo what both my fellow commissioners have said. Kudos to both of you for, one, making friends with your neighbors, but also approaching them, and apologies for going through, you all going through years of this process, it's expensive, timely, obviously you have some other concerns that you want to more immediately have that space downstairs and increase your livable space, so I'm all for it, and it was, it was good to see the shrubs outside. That was my primary concern, was, you know, obviously the view from the neighbors when I saw their first public comment, and so those look like they'll, you know, give you plenty of privacy, them plenty of privacy, and I can make all the findings, and good luck. Hopefully it's not three more years with construction, but, but best of luck on that, on that regard.
Wonderful, thank you. Commissioner Sharon?
Everyone really, I want to, can repeat everything they said, but I'm not going to, but I agree with them. I can, I, you know, that neighborhood, I grew up in that neighborhood with friends and going up there, it's one of the oldest neighborhoods that we have, and it, what's, you know, great about it is that everyone knows each other, and it's, it's a, it's a gem to live in there, so I understand your guys' desire to stay there, and accommodate the home for you guys and your growing needs, and, and, you know, I, you're not obscuring views, you're not doing anything that doesn't, doesn't, doesn't give me any cause for concern, so I too can make all the findings.
Awesome, and so can I. Thank you, guys. Thank you for wanting to raise your family here, thank you for wanting to stay here forever, thank you for being such good neighbors. You epitomize what we aspire to in Agora Hills, and I will say again that your area, one of your neighbors up in Liberty Canyon refers to it as magical. You know, old Agora is rural, Liberty Canyon is, you guys are, you're surrounded by the wilderness in this really beautiful, I hope it doesn't scare you, but apparently there are lots of bobcats and mountain lions only out at night, but wandering through the, so. Okay, interesting. Oh, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh my gosh. Yep, yep, yep. I too can make all of the findings. Okay, so here, let me see if I can, this makes, maybe makes it easier. So you guys, we have a staff recommends, the Planning Commission approve conditional use permit case number CUP 2023-0022 and site plan architectural review case number SPR 2023-038, subject to conditions based on the findings of the draft resolution. Can I have a motion to approve?
Vice Chair Roth, so moved?
Commissioner Sharon, seconds?
And Travis gave me the nod, so that worked, you guys. Okay, Kimberly, can, Kimberly, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Anderson, you have approval, five to zero.
Woo, congratulations. I will now defer to Community Development Director Thomas.
Thank you, Denise Thomas, Community Development Director. The decision of the Planning Commission is final within 15 days unless an appeal is filed with the City Council. Congratulations.
Congratulations. You're welcome, thank you. Aww, enjoy. We'll take you up on that. Let us know, let us know what we can bring. Okay, are there any comments from staff?
Actually, yes, there are a few announcements that I would like to make, and an update that I would like to make. At the last City Council meeting, the Agora Village specific plan amendment that you approved a couple of meetings ago, a meeting ago, it was a marathon, it went very long, but the City Council tabled that item until the upcoming meeting on May 22nd to allow property owners additional time to be able to review and comment on the amendment, and so I wanted to give you an update on that. Our staff has changed. Valerie Darbooz, who's been with the city for, I believe it was 17 years, she resigned, and her last day was, I think it was a week ago, and so Valerie is no longer here, so please bear with staff because we're a planner down right now, and all of Valerie's cases have been absorbed by the staff that is left behind. So we are doing our best to make sure that the applications are processed in a timely manner, but we are a little inundated until we, until we can recruit another planner, and the recruitment should be, the recruitment, I believe, has already been posted, and it is live on our website. We made the paper. I don't know if anyone was aware that we made the paper, we were on the front page of the Acorn, there's an article there, and it was sharing information with the public about our first ministerially-approved affordable housing project. We were able to take it through the process that the City Council adopted as part of our housing element, and there are 278 units in that, in that development. It is four stories, it has 38 affordable units. Of the 38, 28 of those units are very low, and 10 are low, so we have units that we can report to in the next annual progress report to the Housing and Community Development Department toward our RENA, and the units that are market rate or above moderate, we will also be able to count those units toward our affordable, our above-moderate requirement. So that is movement, and it's different. Different doesn't have to be scary. If anyone in the public or any of you have questions about the project, please feel free to contact our office, you can speak with Robbie Nessavich or Gene Burst, and we will happily walk you through kind of what that project is. We want people to understand. We want people to understand the project and so we're here for that, for that reason. I also want to make two other announcements, both relating to Robbie Nessavich, and the first one I'd like to announce is that Robbie and Morgan both graduated from Leadership Conejo. They are the newest cohort of leadership graduates and I want to congratulate both of them. And Robbie is also one of the Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce's 40 Under 40, so he will be honored in July. And Katrina Garcia and Morgan Roth were honored last year and so Robbie is being honored this year. So.
I said he's following him.
Yes, you've got. And give him the glass, he'll get the glass this time. And so with that, I have no other announcements that I would like to make. Thank you.
Denise, that's fantastic. Thank you for all of those announcements, all of those comments. Any, okay, anything else from staff? Any comments from the Planning Commission?
I'll jump in, on the, I have a few real quick. Congrats Robbie, I'll be nice tonight. In terms of affordable housing, and I know we can talk about this separately, but I'm sure everyone's a little bit curious, when we are thinking about the different categories, like what, like what is very low, like what is that in terms of like the actual unit cost? That's, there's like a ratio and a mathematical formula to get to that, so I'm not sure if that's even been formulated, but I'm just curious to know what that looks like.
For that, I'm going to go ahead and defer to Robbie because until he was promoted, he was our housing specialist and he was incremental in helping us create the program, and so he's probably the subject matter expert that I would defer to.
So it is defined in the Health and Safety Code, I believe, every single year, LA County comes out with a published amount of what the actual amount is for the area median income for Los Angeles County, and for very low income, it's 30% of 50% of the area median income and for, I believe, low income, it's up to 60%. So, and then obviously, once, once you get a tenant in an affordable unit, you can't charge more than 30% of their annual income, so that's kind of what it means.
And is that, when you say area, that's LA County?
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate that. I want to congratulate and just welcome you to joining what has become a very fun commission to be part of, Commissioner Stein. You have already, I think, demonstrated why City Council believes that you would be a fantastic person to join the body and I'm very excited to, you know, be serving alongside you in this public capacity and just want to welcome you. I'm sure everyone else will say some pleasantries, but I'll jump in first.
Well, thank you and I, I feel like I got very lucky tonight with fairly two easier Planning Commission votes, so thank you for arranging that for me for the first meeting. And I do look forward to, you know, working with everybody. And I do understand a little bit about the low-income housing and it is a percent, and the other thing, benefit is, generally speaking, most of them do not own cars, so there'll be less traffic coming in and out of the project, which is, I think, beneficial to what we're looking to do in terms of reducing driving, so that's a positive.
Any other comments or questions?
I will just join Vice Chair Roth in welcoming you. We're delighted to have you and he's exactly right, you are beautifully qualified and you fit very, very well in what is an incredibly collegial Planning Commission. I'm delighted to be a part of it and we're delighted to be welcoming you. And staff, you guys are just amazing, like fantastic presentations, fantastic, yeah, 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 you make it, you make it so easy for us and we're really, really grateful for everything you do. Okay, and so with that, the next regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for 6:30 PM on Thursday, June 6th, 2024, in council chambers of the Civic Center located right here at 3001 Ladyface Corridor, Agoura Hills. This meeting is now adjourned.